Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Burville School Committee meeting. The date is July 9th, 2024. It's our regular meeting at 6:00 P.M. And we are in the Burville High School Media Center, 425 East Avenue in Harrisville, Rhode Island. We'll start by, well, we'll start by roll call, and it looks like everyone is here, or all are here, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have nothing for recognition tonight. The next thing that we're talking about is a consent agenda, the approval of minutes, warrants, invoices, and bids.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 11th, 2024, a regular session, and also the June 14th, 2024, special meeting.
Okay, I do have one comment on that. The approval, oh, I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
Second with Jill. And the comment on it is that at the top of the page is, it stated 2023. And a few of the pages, and then there's another one, too.
I think one of the pages shows 2023, ready, a regular meeting.
Down at number seven, fiscal year '23, it says, and that should be '24.
Yep.
Both of them.
Still be a good odd.
I was kind of reading it. This doesn't look right. Thank you.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next thing is warrants and invoices, and it, we don't have, do we have some?
No bids tonight, you do have warrants.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the warrant, 2023, 2024, school warrant number 12, for the month of June dated July the 9th, 2024. Grand total expenditures, $3,816,203.10.
Second, is there a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have no bids.
That's correct.
Presentations by the Public School Committee, and we have Roberta here as tonight, but can we move you...
That's public comment, right?
Yeah.
That falls under public comment?
Yeah, I'm going to do it under the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Can we move you to where it says, discussion vote, I'm sorry, discussion vote lettered to the Town Council regarding the field project? It's down number 12. Do you have the, do we have the agenda? I think it's down in the back of the book. Okay, so we're going to move that, and we also have public comment. So any public comment tonight? Okay, yeah, I know that, but I didn't... Next thing is personnel, leave of absences, retirements, resignations, and appointments.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the leave of absence, I'm sorry.
Roberta, we're going to wait till we get to the agenda item under number 12, and have, we'll have comment then, we'll have comment at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, would you repeat that?
Sure, just going to make a motion to approve the leave of absence for Stephanie Amato, grade three teacher, Stair Farm Elementary, August 26th of 2024 through January 2nd of 2025.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the retirement of Peter Berthalet, perhaps the best M.C. I've ever met. With great thanks, Guidance Council, Burville High School, effective July 1, 2024.
Second? I have a second with Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
With regret.
And Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resignations of the following: Robert Card, chemistry teacher, Burville High School, effective June 17th, 2024; Matthew Grenier, physical education, health, APE teacher, Stair Farm Elementary, effective June 17th, 2024; Angela Topick, extended school year teacher assistant, effective June 14th, 2024; Michael Cropman, mathematics teacher, Burville High School, effective June 27th, 2024; and Amanda Temperley, social studies teacher, Burville High School, effective August 1st, 2024.
Second?
Second by you. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to receive and file the subsequent appointments as presented.
Second.
Second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next thing is teacher recall, and I believe we have two?
We have two, teachers that were recalling the part-time positions for the 24-25 school year. That's Marissa Tebe, point four, reading interventionist at the high school, and Bethany Olson, point four, English language jobs teacher, also at the high school.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're into old business now, for fiscal year '24, Burville School Department budget update.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fiscal year '24 Rink Budget Update.
Make a motion, receive and file.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of second reading for six updated school committee policies. We have, are we going to do it all together, I guess?
Do it as one if you'd like.
Do it all as one. P-6614, P-6616, P-6616, P-6617, P-6618, and P-6637.
Motion to approves the second reading?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is the Superintendent's Report.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of items on my report tonight. I'm going to start with some bad news, unfortunately. And we found out on June 27th of this year that the Retirement Board had changed the rates for fiscal year '25. Obviously, this was very last-minute news after budget development has pretty much been done and finalized, and budgets have been approved, not just there in Burville, but in most districts across the state. The bad news on our part is the additional costs, not including the additional costs in the county, just from the schools, of those rate increases is about $200,000. So we're too late to amend budgets, as you know. We have to proceed with our current budget, since it's been approved and passed, and we've recalled teachers already, there's really nothing to cut at this point. So I did speak to Town Manager Wood about this, and Chairwoman St. Pierre, and we are in agreement, the best case of action at this time is to push forward with the budget the way it is, and we'll have to request a one-time use of restricted funds from the Town Council, when and if we need those because of this unanticipated increase. So it really is mind-boggling that the information came to us after the General Assembly had tentatively approved a budget, and it was literally four days before the new fiscal year. And the retirement rates changed, so as you're aware, we make payments to the Retirement Board based on a specific rate, and that change in that rate is going to cost the town significantly more money in FY '25, but we don't have any recourse at this point. So I'll keep you posted as this further develops, but at some point in FY '25, we will have to appear in front of the Town Council and request the use of undesigned funds or restricted funds to fund that $200,000 for retirement increases. So moving on to some better news. At the Skills USA National Leadership Conference, which was held in Atlanta recently, Burville had five students that placed in the top 10 at the national level. So there were 25 students across all of Rhode Island, five of which were right here from Burville High School, so I want to give them a little recognition and a shout-out. So we had a team at the high school that were bronze medal winners at the national level, so they placed third in the nation. Their contest was a career pathway showcase for industrial and engineering technology. So congratulations, it was Benjamin Peña, Nolan Terenzzi, and Sean Zanella. Again, bronze winners for the third-place finish in the national Skills USA contest. And we also had an urban search and rescue, Carolyn Amorin, and Benny Tachera placed fifth. So five top-10 finishes nationally from our CTE program. So congratulations to those students and to the instructors. I know Mr. Aldrich and Mr. Pillings were both in attendance at the national conference, so kudos to them as well.
That's awesome, thank you.
And finally, as you might remember, RIDE offers an application for partial reimbursement on health and safety projects once a year. Projects can be up to $500,000 with reimbursement at your municipal rate. So for us, our municipal reimbursement rate is 46.5%. You get an additional 5% for health and safety, a bonus of 5% reimbursement for health and safety. So our reimbursement rate will be somewhere in the neighborhood of 51%. This year, we're applying for reimbursement of about $110,000 to fund the following school safety projects: restriping of our parking lots at all schools, concrete sidewalk repair at all schools, some fascia board repairment and safety markings here at the high school, and then purchase of air scrubbers and dehumidifiers across all of our schools. Item, this item is on the agenda for tomorrow's July 10th School Committee, I'm sorry, Town Council meeting. I will be away, so Mr. Robinson will attend, answer any questions that may arise. You did send a letter to the Town Council, you have that placed on the agenda. Also send a letter to the School Building Authority from the Department of Education. Hopefully, that gets approved, and hopefully, the town funds these projects. Safety projects, as you know, are needed for, to be completed immediately. So hopefully, once this gets approved at the town level, it'll get approved at RIDE's level. Once the work is underway and then completed, we'll be eligible for reimbursement of up to about 51%. So we have done this the last couple of years, and continue to do this so that we can actualize as much cost savings and reimbursement from the state as possible. So any questions on that?
Now, the Town Council's pretty good about...
Yeah, they've been very, very generous when it comes to safety issues. That, the safety application was put together with input from Colonel Lynch as well. And finally, it's been a busy few weeks since the end of the school year. Lots of projects are ongoing. Stair Farm boilers were, old boilers were taken out today, and I think the new ones are ready to go in. Lots of other ongoing projects across the district. We have a number of teaching vacancies to fill. It's a small number this year, but there's still a couple that are underway. The search is underway. And today, we started both our summer school and extended school year, and some of our summer enrichment as well, and those activities will be ramping up over the next couple of weeks. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Selito, when is the summer reading? Is that next week?
It started Monday of this week, and it's every Monday from now until August.
Awesome.
You going to read?
I was just going to say you're going to volunteer?
I think there's some, there may be some open spots still available if you want to read.
Well, thank you, Dr. Selito.
Thank you.
The next thing we're talking about is the Administrator's Reports, and we have deferred that until the October meeting. So number 10, reports of school committee subcommittees. And we have one from Donison Allen.
Yep, just wanted to give you the minutes from the March meeting. They meet every two months, and so this is the last set of minutes that they provided to me. Hopefully, they'll get me the other ones for the next meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other committee meetings? All set? Correspondence and Communications. Having none. Number 12, new business homeschool applications, we have none. Overnight field trip approval, class of 2025 to Orlando, Florida, and it will be held in April 10th, 2025 to April 13th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is discussion vote relocation of CIP funds. And we have those here.
That paper you gave us today?
Correct.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a question on that? So some of the reallocation of these funds, they're not going to impact any technology services for our kids that are connected?
No.
No? Okay.
I do have a concern about air conditioning. Can, are we talking about air conditioning for our future?
The ATL air conditioner upgrade is isolated to particular rooms.
Okay, but I mean for schools themselves because of climate change? Are we thinking about it at least?
I mean, I think we have the discussion every year, but the budgetary cost of that is astronomical. I mean, at the high school, several of our key areas, like where we are tonight, thank God, thank goodness, is air-conditioned, the auditorium is air-conditioned, there's specific areas of the building, but because the buildings are, in many cases, old, and not everything's connected, so some have different venting and different ventilation systems. So at Levee, for example, at Levee, when we had students that required air conditioning for specific physical needs, we had mini-splits put in rather than full central air conditioning. So I think the best bet for us is to try to identify key areas that we can address similar to that, but just to put in, like, you know, central air-conditioned massive units on the roofs, we can't come close to affording that price tag.
Most of the time, that would be just the end of the year, kind of. That's usually the hottest or the first couple of weeks.
The last few years, it's actually been September more so than it has in June. We've seen that shift a little bit, you know, June's getting a little colder and September's getting a little warmer, at least over the last couple of years. A bigger issue that we're having is the humidity, the high humidity levels. And if you recall, the last couple of years during this time of year, we had some mildew issues that would pop up due to the humidity, and we had to get air scrubbers from Envire Cleaners, a company that we used. They came in and put dehumidifiers and air scrubbers in all the buildings to make sure we had the problem under control. So one of the things I, we are applying for in that safety grant is to purchase our own dehumidifiers. These are big, giant, portable dehumidifiers and air scrubbers that we could deploy in all the buildings, so we won't have to pay every summer to have it done. If we own those units, we can just deploy them as needed throughout the year. So that, that may help with the heat, some of the issues towards the end of the year as well.
Thank you. And the next thing, we did, we did a...
The motion's still on the floor, I believe, for that. I don't think it's been voted on.
Okay, we had a motion, we had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion vote, letter to Town Council regarding field project concerns.
Motion open?
Second.
Second, okay. And...
So I could start here if you don't mind?
Thank you.
So a few weeks ago, Roberta Lacy was here tonight, called me and came in. We had a meeting to talk about some of her concerns regarding some forever chemicals that may be a result of the artificial turf field. We had a conversation probably for about 45 minutes, lots of information that she supplied to me, and I kind of briefed the school committee on some of this, and I know that she had followed up with the Town Council. As a result of that, on tonight's meeting, we added on the agenda a discussion for the committee regarding the possibility of sending a letter to the Town Council expressing some concerns that the school committee members may have. And Mrs. Lacy's here to give you some additional information about that.
Okay, you want to just go up to the mic? I know, I know. Yeah, would you give us your name and address, please?
Roberta Lacy, 80 Spring Street in Pasco.
Is that mic on? Because I can't hear.
The mic is for the streaming.
So we don't have one, so we can... Yeah, no, but we don't have one, so we can hear. Roberta, you're going to have to talk loudly.
Okay, I'll try. Okay, so I just want to give just an overview of how I came to learn about turf fields. I didn't intend or set out to learn anything about artificial turf. I'm involved with, I am involved with conservation on a town and a state level. I am currently working on what's called a Wildlife Conservation Plan for Burville. That's as part of the Conservation Commission. So as part of that, I've been learning a lot about water. So I really set out to learn about wildlife, water, microorganisms, flora and fauna in Burville, and it just seemed like I could not open up a magazine or a newspaper reading about conservation and not hear about a chemical called PFAS. And I really didn't know what that was. I knew that Oakland had had a contamination, and that contamination was called PFAS. But at the time, it just wasn't on my radar, and I didn't pay attention to it. Well, it did not take me very long to learn how dangerous PFAS are, and that they're in everything, and very quickly, I learned that they were in artificial turf. And it just, I was like, wait a minute. I knew they were doing a sports complex, which I think is wonderful. I commend everybody who's involved with such a big project. I know how those things can go. But I still was not sure if it was natural turf or artificial. So I asked a few questions around, and I learned that it was artificial turf. And then I knew I had a decision to make. I knew I was late to the game. I quickly learned that the project has been, you know, in the process for a long time, and that a lot of people had worked on it. But as with any very difficult decision, I knew it was extremely important, so I set out to educate myself on PFAS, and I know that I had to get a lot of information if I was going to bring it to the public at this late in the game. So that is what I did. I approached everyone involved with the project that I could. I just asked questions. I went to the council, I went to the town manager, I went to the superintendent, I went to Pasco Utility District, I went to Harrisville Water Department. Everyone, as I, more information as I learned, I just reached out to everybody. And the reason that I did that is because I didn't want to point blame, and I didn't want to start hysteria of all the things that I learned. I wanted to give everybody involved the opportunity to learn the same things that I did so they could make an informed decision, because I do not believe anybody had the correct information to make an informed decision. If they had, I do not believe we would be in the process of putting down an artificial turf field. So as of June 26th, the last Town Council meeting, I knew I had to do something different. I knew that all the people that I had gone to, I don't think they weren't taking me seriously, but I do think that people had, you know, it's just such a big project, and it was moving so fast that people really don't know what to do. So I did, at that point, involve the public. That was two weeks ago. I now have 350 signatures to date of people who are concerned that I've tried to educate on PFAS. So this packet that I made up, I don't, it's a little bit long. I try to get through it really fast, and I don't know how else to share with everybody other than this. So I'm just going to quickly go over what I have. So what I started, when I started out, I delivered these pamphlets to everyone that I could. And these, this pamphlet right here is from the Department of Health, and it really gives a lot of really good information for anyone who's been exposed to any of these chemicals. I went to Well One, and I, I was on the board at Well One at the time, I'm not anymore. But I told them that I really believe this should be, you know, in their lobby, because this is a town that has had major exposure, and we're just beginning to see the fallout of that exposure right now. The second thing I put in my packet, and I did have 50 packets, but they're gone. That's why you don't have one today, because I don't have any left, and I just, I can't print anymore. So this came from the Department of Health and the University of Rhode Island, and this is another, it's Safe Water Rhode Island. And I pass this out to anybody who has private wells, and they need to know where to get their well tested, if they feel like they've been exposed. And again, this gives, mostly everything that I have just gives a whole roadmap to educate yourself if you need to. It's a starting point, but there's websites, and you go down a rabbit hole. I did, trust me. There's so much information. The next thing in my packet that's really good is this is from the EPA, and this, again, gives a roadmap with a QR code. And I will share packets with anybody who wants them. I will have more printed if I need to. This QR code gives you everything you need to know on PFAS from an environmental standpoint, from the EPA, what, you know, the levels were at, when they were at that, when they've changed, and where they're going. The next thing I have in my packet is a map of where the proposed field site is. This yellow outline is just, it's just actually on that lot. But you can see the high school right here, and this is where the proposed field is supposed to be. And this is an overlay of our aquifer. That's why it's blue. This right here is the arch of Clear River. This is so very important. This is everything, you know, that I do and I dedicate my extra time to, is protecting the aquifer. Our own zoning ordinance, 3202, it says that we should not store or use anything hazardous over our aquifer. PFAS are a hazardous substance, and in my opinion, they do not belong over this. I'm not sure why this project didn't go through zoning or planning, which that may have been picked up. Those are questions that...
What did you just say, before that?
That, I said that this did not go through zoning or planning department.
Oh, you said something before that, that I was writing something down.
Over an, over an aquifer?
This is over, this is over our aquifer?
That town doesn't allow it?
That's right. Our town ordinance, 3202, under section 4, I'm going to say B, in prohibited uses, it states that no hazardous substance should be used or stored over our aquifer zone. This same thing happened in Martha's Vineyard, where the school committee proposed an artificial turf field, and when it went before zoning and planning, it got picked up on that it was over an aquifer zone, and they spent two years fighting their school committee, and they did win because, you know, they had decided with a lot of lawyers and fights that it did not belong over the overlay zone. These fields leach, that's their claim to fame. That is one true thing that they, they do, that they say they do. They drain very well. This is also a floodplain. This area is also a floodplain, and the floodplain is shown in the next one. That's a floodplain. So the next thing I have is, this is an article, this is from UMass Lowell, and this is one of the first things I came across that was really a legitimate thing that actually calls out artificial turf carpet. Everywhere you look under, you know, what's made of PFAS, we all know, plastic, you know, anything that's a coated substance is PFAS. But nobody wants to call out artificial turf. At least they didn't until probably, probably about six months ago, because they're afraid of retribution. But it is a carpet. They'll talk about, you know, it's in outdoor carpets, it's in this, but not a lot of people say "artificial turf carpet." And what it is, is it is a 400,000-pound carpet made out of microplastics. That's what it is. This is a great article. I actually spoke with Graham Peasley from Notre Dame. He's the one who wrote this, very highly respected man, knows what he's talking about. He calls out, he calls that out. The next thing I have is, this is from Harrisville Water District. I don't know how many people are on Harrisville Water here, but this comes in the mail every year. This is our, this is our consumer confidence report from '23, '24. I've never seen a section before that's only dedicated to talking about PFAS, because that is the most, we're at the most risk of danger from PFAS. So in our water, in Harrisville Water, right now, we're at 15 pots per trillion. It's the only thing on here that's marked in pots per trillion. You never see chemicals marked in pots per trillion, but that's how they measure PFAS. Last year, we were at 8.9. This year, we're at 15, and that's with a lot of diluting. That's with a lot of charcoal filters. The EPA has an interim standard that's set right now at 20 pots per trillion. Interim standard, they would like to see it at four by next year. This really has, is new on the radar. In 2015, when it was discovered that the firefighting foam, which I'm sure everybody's heard about, was getting into waterways and polluting because it's made of PFAS, 3M and DuPont couldn't hide that anymore. They are the makers of the chemicals PFAS. There's thousands of PFAS chemicals, but there are six that they call the forever chemicals. but there are six that they call the forever chemicals because they're the absolute worst. I believe there's two of them that have been banned so far. So that's scary. We have, we have a well in Harrisville, in the Eccleston Field, that is at 70 pots per trillion. And they mix it with all of the other wells and dilute it so that we can get to safe numbers. We're not going to be able to do that for long. Because next year, we are going to be very hard pressed to get the water where it's supposed to be. It should be at zero. It's a hazardous substance. Another thing I'd like to know is that Harrisville Fire District is part of a class action lawsuit against 3M and DuPont, the makers of PFAS, for contaminating their water. And I know that Pasco recently merged with Harrisville because they would like to sell more water. They would like to find and sell more water. I know that was a three-year process. And they're going to be hard pressed to find water too that doesn't have PFAS in it since. Really, the planet is contaminated with PFAS. And then I'd like to draw attention to, this is the Burraville mitigation plan. And this was put together by monies that was available to municipalities through FEMA. And so they tasked communities to, you know, put these committees together and do risk assessments and find out what they thought was posing the biggest risk to their community. And in 2021, they added the aquifer. And that is right up at the top of the list. And it says in this document, anyone can find this online, that it is critical to protect our aquifer because we have already had two major contaminations. We all know that. I don't want to keep repeating myself. But Pasco nor Oakland have water anymore. The next document is, this is from the EPA. And this went into effect yesterday. As I said, these things are unfolding like in our lifetime. This is the chemical that will be talked about. You know, we, we know Agent Orange, we know from, you know, our families and, you know, the last generation. This is our generation and this is up and coming. So as of yesterday, which I've never seen happen yet in all the time that I've been paying attention to water and chemicals, I've never seen the EPA put a regulation on a chemical or change it. Since 1940, 3M and DuPont have not been regulated for what they've been doing. And as of yesterday, PFAS, which has always been designated as a fluorinated organic chemical, is now called a hazardous substance. So when I refer to our own ordinance about not storing a hazardous substance over our aquifer, PFAS is, it doesn't say one pot per trillion, or 50 pots per trillion, or an inch of carpet, or 88,000 square feet. It says, no hazardous chemical. The next thing is, as of June 26th, the Rhode Island House passed our first PFAS ban unanimously, both sides of the aisle, 71 votes. They slimmed down this bill a little bit to get it through. But still, as of 2029, in Rhode Island, you cannot, you can't basically do anything with PFAS after 2029. This names artificial turf. So I know that, that there's an eight-year, I believe they have an eight-year contract, an eight, or whatever you want to call it, but it's, it will be null and void. So in five years, 2029, I do not know how they would ever honor that because they can't replace the carpet. If someone drives over it and damages it, they cannot put any new materials down. This actually passed the night I was at the town council meeting, later in the evening. So I couldn't really speak about it because it hadn't passed yet. This is from our attorney general. And our attorney general also has a lawsuit in behalf of the state of Rhode Island against 3M and DuPont for poisoning our water. As do 32 other states across the United States for poisoning municipal water. So that's all in my packet. And I'm just going to talk just a little bit about what I know and what I've learned about artificial turf. Oppose, you know, so artificial turf all contains PFAS. If you've ever left a regular rug out in the rain overnight, we all know what happens to it. It has to be coated. Anything that's left outside has to be coated, umbrellas, raincoats, and artificial carpets. There's an eight, eight to 10-year is what they say it will last. But I know that Burraville has an eight-year warranty on the one that they have. One of their, the myths is that it's recyclable. And that language is called greenwashing. The companies that make PFAS and sell them, they also have many lawsuits against them for greenwashing, for greenwashing language and writing language in that leads people to believe, who just don't know that their products are green. And some of the things they say is that they use less water. So that's what makes them green. They don't use less water. They have to be watered because they're 70 degrees hotter than normal grass. So if you're a four, four feet off the field, 70 degrees hotter. So if you're a child and you're under that four feet, you cannot get out of the heat. And one of the reasons it's so hot is because they use tire crumb rubber. 220,000 pounds of tire crumb rubber. That's all that is, is chopped up tires. It's little pieces of tires that they put on top of the grass blades, brush it in so that the grass blades will stand up. The black draws the heat. It's a carcinogen. And it washes off the field. I'm not sure at what rate, but I believe five tons a year has to be replaced because it leaves the field in shoes. And anyone has kids who play soccer or grandchildren have seen it. It leaves in bags and shoes. Most of it gets washed off. Most of it will be in Clear River. One of the other things they say is it's a lot cheaper because you don't need maintenance. But they all come with a maintenance plan. I believe that the one that is being installed at the high school has its, a maintenance plan through the company. But there's also a clause that says that Burraville has to buy certain equipment and do parts of it. One of those things is spraying it with a micro and microbial something to kill the germs on it. Another myth is that the crumb rubber, the field is three layers. You guys might already know this. But the first layer is foam. Nobody knows what's in that foam because they do not disclose that. The second layer is the grass blades and the third layer are the infills. It's tire crumb rubber, but now they don't want to call it that. They call it infills or they call it Enviro fills, another greenwashing word. Which means they coat these little black balls of tire crumb in old fields that they melt down. They melt down and chew up old fields and they use that to coat. So now that it's green, it doesn't draw as much heat. And they call that Enviro fills. The one thing that they will discuss is injuries. And you can go on any website and they'll show you, you know, the pros and cons and the doctors that do say, well, yeah, there are more injuries, maybe on females. I could not get into that. I know water and that's what I had to stay with because there are so many issues around this, the crumb rubber, you know, the injuries, the health issues that are connected to this. I know they're all true. I just could not study them. I stuck with water. But I did, in my opinion, the reason they do talk about those things is because it's a diversion from talking about tire crumb rubber and PFAS, the real animal in that carpet. So a few things that I came across, new information, is that North Smithfield Junior, Senior High School put a field in two years ago. And there's a DEM report out. You can look up the DEM report on PFA test in Rhode Island. I believe it was 2022. And I have a photograph of that field and all the test sites around it. There are two wells that serve North Smithfield Junior Senior High School. The one above grade of the field is clean. The one below grade has 30 pots per trillion of PFAS. There are three well, test wells across the street, right on the edge of Goodwin's property. Those are much lower, but they're nowhere near the one below the field. Also, on that report, is a graph and it shows for the 80 tests that they did around Rhode Island, there's nine that were considered the most serious and they had the most concentration of the worst PFAS. Two of them are in Burraville. One of them is Oakland and the other one is in Eccleston Field in that well for the worst five PFAS. There's, I can't name every one of them on there because when I read it, even though I've been studying this for a few months, I was still stung. Because it's just, was really hard to see it in print. And the third one I remember on there is my grandchildren's daycare, 48. So the other new information I have is, as of today, Pasco Utility District stood up tall. And they're supporting this. So after all these months of not having anyone respond to me, Pasco Utility District sent a letter today to the town council, to the town manager, to DPW. They know contamination. They have no water. And they do not want this merger that they're going to do to be all for nothing. The only, the last thing I will say is every single person I've talked to about this has given me information and has shed light on other aspects of this project. And one of the things that I was told early on by the town council president was, why now? Why didn't you bring this sooner? And I would like to say that the onus is not on me. I am not responsible for this, you know, what's going on. And I've since learned things were brought to the committee who worked on this, that there were a few people who came forward, teachers and coaches, about, mostly about injuries, medical issues and injuries. And they weren't heard. And a few of them will be at the town council meeting tomorrow night. So thank you very much. I know it's a lot of information in a short amount of time. But thank you for listening to me.
Would you field a question or two?
Of course, if, if I can.
Yeah, okay. Just, one, one thing that struck me, you'd mentioned this, this PFAS already in Harrisville water supply. Do you know, like, if those have been traced back to like where the sources might have been? Do we know?
All of the sources that are really high from everything I've read is from firefighting foam, from where the fire department's practiced. They, you know, they were given this to use and use they did. You know, they, this was a substance that worked. It worked for extremely hot fires. PFAS cannot be broken down. They cannot, they're persistent in our bodies and in the environment. They're a carbon bond, they're a carbon fluorine bond. And they are kind of a miracle chemical. But we know now that they don't break down. And they have to be incinerated at 2,700 degrees to break them down. That's why they work so well. And that's why they were used and the EPA allowed them to be used on military bases all, all across the entire world. I believe there's 440 military bases that are contaminated. Their wells are all contaminated from the firefighting foam. So that is the main culprit. And 3M and DuPont knew this. They knew this in 1960 is when they knew it was persistent in our bodies and, and the environment.
To piggyback off that, do you know what threshold presents impact to human health? Like, or what those impacts might be? Is there any?
They are, if, if, I will share, I will make sure it gets to you. But any one of these pamphlets, the Department of Health, DEM, they will all let you know what the, what the health risks are. And it's zero pots per trillion, zero. It's a hazardous substance. It doesn't belong in our body. It used to be set at 70 pots per trillion before anyone knew about this, before 2015 when it really, it was so mobile in the firefighting foam that it just got into our waterways. It was so easily rinsed off, you know, they rinse off the trucks, rinse everything off. And, you know, that's our firefighters that we're exposed to all of this for years and years.
I certainly would like to see the information. So if there's a way to get a packet to us.
I have a packet that Roberta gave me when we met earlier in June. I'll make sure everyone on the school committee gets a copy.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Roberta, do you know if they did at, in North Smithfield, if they did, if they tested the water prior to installing the field?
I don't believe so. I don't believe they did.
And do you know if they went through all the proper zoning regulations and things that you said we didn't?
Not sure how it went in North Smithfield. That's, I don't have that information.
And I'm curious about that piece a little bit. Do you, like, did someone just drop the ball on this as far as us?
I believe because it's a town project. If you look at it from, so, so the town isn't going to go and get a permit and pay $100 for a permit for earth removal. But my question to that is, who is the town accountable to? Everyone has to be accountable to somebody, not because they would do anything maliciously or intentionally, but because we all need one another. I didn't, I don't know zoning. I don't know planning. So that's why we have those departments. So everything does go through them. So it keeps everyone safe. So I'm not, I can't answer that, why it didn't go through either one of them. I forgot one very important thing. That I learned that the water that is going to be used will come from the high school. So the high school will hook in to your water that the school committee, the school pays for. And that's what will water this field. So municipal water, drinking water, will water this field to cool it down or to rinse it off or to do whatever they need to do with it. So I don't know who's paying for that water. I don't believe there's a plan in place for that. But that was mentioned at, that was mentioned at the last town council meeting. And there's so much information to this that I just realized that yesterday and I was like, okay, that's, that's not good either. That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother question. I didn't go through.
Thank you. I'd like to also add, I did get a chance to look at the packet that Roberta has. And if you read more than two pages into it, you know this is no joke. This is some really bad stuff that, that is in these, in these artificial turfs. So, you know, and obviously, you know, we're here as a school committee. We wish we could solve the world's problems. However, we are here to, to protect our students and, and take care of our, our district, you know, our teachers and things. So, you know, I would also, obviously, the water- So, you know, I would also, obviously, the water condition is a, is a a bad thing for the whole town, which the school lies in. But, you know, what about our students? You're talking about the leaching of this stuff into the earth, right? Which like, you know, oh, it doesn't hurt me up here. But if you do a little more digging, which my wife and I did as we have three children in the school system, it's not only what's leaching into the earth, it's what's going on to topically when you're running on this turf, when you're, you put your water bottle down, when your mouth guard falls out of your mouth, when you pick your stick up and, and when you touch your mouth, like, these things are literally everywhere. And it's from, from our standpoint, from the school side, I'm not letting my kids play on this, you know? And that's, that's like, that's a hard statement. But if you do your research, there's a reason this stuff isn't out in, in the public because too much money is invested in it that they can't blow the lid off of it, right? So, so here we are at the end of this dying era of these plastics and we're like jumping on the bandwagon for, you know, we're gonna dump how many tons of this into our, into our town. So, you know, not only from the water standpoint, guys, remember that we're gonna send our kids of all ages onto this field to play, to fall, to, to have, you know, little cuts and stuff. Like, these PFOS and, and there's PFAs, PFOs, and now there's even more variants of it that like, you don't even wanna be near this in the next town, never mind have it all over your children. So, I, I stand with, with Roberta and, and her. It's not even, it's, it's, it's her time and effort into this, but this is public knowledge that nobody's bringing to, to the attention of the people that need it, the people that are making these decisions for, for a lot of our citizens. We, the people, have to realize and stand together that, you know, this stuff is bad news, bad news. And whatever we have to do to at least pump the brakes and say, what other options are there? We're not scrapping this, this, this whole project. It's an amazing project for the municipal, for, for the whole district, really, for the whole town. So I would just say like, let's at least, you know, we have to draft a letter of, of concern to the, the town council. You know, let's, let's make sure they understand that, oh, you know, somebody came in and talked and were slightly concerned. No, 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 we should be up in arms right now. We should be pounding down the door of, of the town council area over there, letting them know this is a big deal. So if you haven't done the research, for whatever my, my word is worth, it's some, it's some nasty stuff, we don't want our children near it. So however we can protect, whatever we have to do. I think we're all willing to do that stuff. Thank you, Roberta.
I think my, my concern is when you said, correct me if I'm wrong, but the state of Rhode Island has a ban on PFOS, it starts in two thousand twenty-nine. Correct?
Five years.
Yeah, so, so they'll be banned in two thousand twenty-nine. So from now till then, we'll, the state will be working towards phasing them out. Not to say you can't go in a store and buy something that has PFOS in it, but you cannot, you, you cannot make it in the state of Rhode Island. You can't distribute it in the state of Rhode Island. You know, you can't put anything new down. And the other thing that this new bill says, the one from the EPA and the one from the state of Rhode Island says, "You will be held accountable if you knowingly use PFOS and do something that injures someone else from PFOS or contaminates the environment, you can be held liable." The town, they can. I actually had an attorney with me on the twenty-sixth because I knew that they had representatives there from Field Turf and I'm not really a match for, you know, people with all this scientific data. So, but she brought to their attention that they, they will be held liable if they knowingly harm the environment because they can't say they didn't know, no.
I have to say I commend you for coming forward with this. I know this was probably a very difficult thing. You know, like you said, it's, we've already started production and everything else so that it took a lot for you to come forward. But I agree with Dave a hundred percent in the fact that I also have three children that will play on that turf. And I got involved to protect the safety of the kids. And so whatever that means, you know, is what I will always do. So I appreciate, you know, all the research you've done and I'm sure this has taken a lot, a lot of your time. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
My concern is the, this artificial turf is not gonna last forever. And if we have to upgrade it, we're not going to be able to. The other thing I wanna know is, as far as the turf, as far as the field goes, where are we in, in the construction? Have we had any plastics delivered there yet?
No.
No?
No, I drive through there every day.
Thank you.
And I've got another question related to that. I've been a proponent of, of grass all along for mostly the injury piece of it, not knowing what we're getting ourselves into with this. I kinda lost my train of thought. You get so many things going through my head at one time here. So my, my final thoughts, I think, on this is that, you know, David is passionate about what he's learned. I'm not there yet because I don't, I haven't seen it. You know, I did a ton of research back in the day with wireless radiation, you know? And World Health Organization in two thousand eleven said it's possible carcinogen, you know? So I, everything we do is a balance in life, you know? So I still have my device, I still have concerns about using it. And, and so I'm not sure if we're gonna find a way to mitigate this, but to, to, to the end of, you know, at two thousand twenty-nine, if we can't replace this thing, are we, are we setting ourselves up for failure? Where now we have to rip this all out and go back to grass? Or is there an alternative product that you know of that's made available that eliminates these, these issues?
Grass.
Grass, right. So in, in the stage of development that we're at, with, I think there's structures in the ground, probably receptacles for runoff and things. I haven't really seen this, but if you shift to a grass project, how far along are we with the infrastructure for a turf field that would set us back financially to go to a, a grass? Do we know?
I mean, I can't answer that off the top of my head, but I, I do, I do think there would be a considerable financial cost. Number one, there's towns under contract with Field Turf, with the company. And I, I think a big concern with grass field would be that we would, we would have to have irrigation there. And the maintenance from year to year cost, that's, that's one of the selling points of an artificial turf field is that, you know, the maintenance, there's still a maintenance cost, but it's not as costly as it is and it's not as labor intensive as it is for the, for the field. We had a grass field there, at Gledhill Field for years. And kids did get injured on that field. Different injuries than you get on, on the artificial turf. But when you're playing on a field that has moguls and bumps and lots of twisted ankles and lots of falls and, and, you know, those, those conditions could deteriorate. So if there's a grass field that's put in, it's gonna be done right? I don't, I don't know where we are in that. I don't think it's too late to shift.
I mean, the hundred thousand that we have to put aside to replace this is probably enough money to keep a grass field up, I would think.
Yeah, I would agree.
You know what I mean? Like in terms of dollars, we have to put a hundred thousand.
And if your question is it too late to shift, I don't think it's too late to shift. You know, with the town having authority of this project, all of those decisions are made at the town.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Do you happen to know, so I'm just, and you may not know the answer to this question, but if they know this is gonna be banned in two thousand twenty-nine, do you know of an alternative? Like, is somebody trying to come up with something different that doesn't have PFOS?
Yes, the, the actual companies who sell these artificial turfs, that's their end game. They spoke of that at the last meeting at the town council, that they're trying to create a PFOS-free alternative. They're nowhere near that, there yet. And I do believe it's a misconception to believe that it's less money for an artificial turf field. If you were to take the money that's being spent on this field and had spread it, you could have taken care of every single field. Having a contract with someone who knows how to take care of grass, you know, come in and take care of them. I am not a proponent of any kind of chemicals, but there are plenty of organic things that can go on a field and, you know, install, you know, irrigation systems. I know there is a well right now in Gledhill Field. I don't know why that isn't in consideration to use. I believe it was put in it ten or twelve years ago. But there is a system there, I've walked the field. I see the, the covers on the boxes that are all overgrown. I don't believe the town has ever given the time to have something, someone sit down with the committee and put things together on field care. So it's an easy pie in the sky, you know, we'll come in, we'll do this. But that's millions of dollars. It's a million dollars to get a new piece of turf in eight to ten years. The other thing is, what will you do with it in two thousand twenty-nine? Even as of today, artificial turf is not recyclable. There is not an incinerator in the United States that can incinerate artificial turf. It's, it has to be, again, I'll repeat, twenty-seven hundred degrees to break it down. And I've called landfills all over the country. They'll take them. They won't recycle them. They can't recycle them. So the turf fields, if you press them for information on how they get rid of them, they say they ship them out of state, one, out of the country. One place is Finland, I can't even remember where the other place is. I've spent hours and hours on the phone posing as someone who wants a field, asking really tough questions. And these things, they cannot be recycled. So in two thousand twenty-nine, when they're banned, they're going in the landfill. They're going in the landfill now. That's why it's, the landfill's contaminated. I wouldn't wanna, you know, our landfill's contaminated. They've been making PFOS for all of these years. We just didn't know how persistent they were. So they don't get a green light now that they have a fancy new product that they wanna put down. And furthermore, one other thing is that we, we have all these wonderful things we do now with the children, we teach them how to recycle. I didn't teach my kids to recycle, I didn't know about it then. My grandchildren, everything's recycling. Try throw a piece of paper in the trash, you know, they'll rip it right out. They, you know, we're teaching them about recycling and using the last plastics, yet we're putting down eighty-eight thousand square feet of plastic for them to play on. It doesn't make sense.
Well, I, I just wanna say something. I sat on the committee and when it was first brought to us, I was so excited about it, new, beautiful new field at Barrowville and all the money it's gonna generate and.
Kids are all excited.
Yeah, I mean, I was excited about and I was all for it. Shame on us for not doing our due diligence and looking deeper into this. It was not brought to me originally about the PFOS. I didn't know what, I didn't even know what it stood for. I don't know what it means, I didn't know anything about it. I don't know anything about PFOS until, until this. It's scary. My concern is that it's gonna cost our school more money because we're gonna put this field in that's gonna be obsolete in five years, basically, because we're in two, it's gonna go down in two thousand twenty-five. So four years, this field is gonna be no good. When we go to replace the field, we're not gonna be able to replace it with what's down there now. What is it gonna cost us to have it removed? Because eventually it's gonna have to be removed because we're not going to be able to put this back down once it's down.
So aside from a letter, what do you, what can we do to support you in this?
I think at this point, it's just supporting with a letter, letting, you know, the town council know that, you know, this is, it's a, it's a serious thing. And that Barrow can still have a beautiful field and they can be on the cutting edge of this. This is something that's coming. All over the country, they're ripping these fields out because of the contamination they're causing. So put a committee together and talk about taking care of natural grass and the benefits from natural grass. We played on natural grass our whole life. We fell, we scraped our knees, you know, we got boo-boos. But we weren't, you know, we didn't have to damage the environment to do it. I just think people getting on board and just educating themselves on it and saying no to these companies. You know, I believe that Barrowville, you know, they stand up and say no when they need to. You know, we said no to Invenergy. We can, it's as simple as saying no. I don't know, we kinda give our power away. We don't have to do what everyone else is doing.
I think if the town, the, so, so the town has already in contract with the, the, what, now that we have the ban, now that the ban is in effect, that should be able to, I don't know, null and void the contract because it's.
They can't stay true to their contract. There's no way they can stay true to their contract. And they knew this was coming. Again, it's not on anyone else but them.
So the town has an out. The town has an out. To me, the town has an out.
It'll be expensive, but we have an out.
You know what? My ultimate concern is that. Shame on us for not doing our due diligence.
I think that, I, I don't know, I don't know the financial part of it, but from what I've seen, there is no way artificial turf is cheaper than a grass field. Maybe now that they've pulled eighty-eight thousand square feet of soil out of there at eighteen inch depth. Not a mathematician, but that's a lot of soil. We all know what we pay for a yard of loom, forty-four dollars a yard.
Do you happen to know where that went?
It's part of the contract, the turf company, the ex-revenue, ex-revenue company.
Yeah, so.
Company that clears the field, it's part of the contract, they keep the, the loom.
It's part of the contract, but the, the, I do know who the company is who took it out because I know the people. And they probably have a million dollars' worth of loom to sell. So that should have been taken off the top of, you know, you could have sold the, but that's not the way business works, I realize that. Everybody needs to make money, but.
Well, I think as a, as a town, we have a major, major concern because we've had two sets of wells, two sets of aquifers that are contaminated and cannot be used. Bar, Harrisville has wells, one of them is contaminated. But the rest of them, as of this time, are usable. After that, when that gets contaminated, we have no more water. Where are we gonna get our water?
I don't know if anyone's noticed in the last two weeks that has municipal water, that the water is, it's not clear, it's cloudy. It's full of bubbles. And that is an indication of a low water table. Something, I don't know if it's in the pumping or I'm not sure exactly what it's in, but when water is low, you get that cloudy water. So, like, you know, you, you, years ago, I wouldn't, you think it happens in other states, oh my God, they got a contamination, they don't have water. What do they do? Oh my God, they get it trucked in. We're there. We're Barrow, we have tons of lakes and ponds and water.
Our aquifer is one of the largest, it actually is the largest in the state as of right now.
And it's contaminated. And that aquifer, although it's beyond the wells in Harrisville, so it really wouldn't flow back and contaminate the fields, the, the wells in Eccleston Field anymore. Will contaminate who's ever left in Oakland with well water. It's part of a recharge zone as well. And it was the best, cleanest water in the state. It's Class A water in Oakland.
So how will we?
Thank you, Roberta.
Thanks, Roberta. Thank you, Roberta.
It's another two blocks, we'll do the right thing.
Is that?
You gotta pack the losses sooner or later.
Did you? Cindy, you're with Roberta, right?
Yes. Hi, thank you for giving me a couple of minutes. Barrow High School, class of seventy-one.
Your name and your address.
Oh, Cindy Luciere, I live at one fifty Old Wallam Lake Road. So, you know, I think just a couple of things that came to mind as I was driving down here tonight, I learned about this just a few weeks ago. And I think like someone said earlier, I, I did just a basic Google search and, you know, it's, it's there, it's everywhere. And every time you open one tab, it leads you somewhere else, to something else. You know, countries in Europe are ripping their fields out and refusing to have them, you know, let their children play on them. There's a reason for that, you know, they, they know what's going on. You know, I, I don't understand why it didn't go through zoning. You know, I, I don't understand why it didn't go through zoning and, and planning. As we know, in Venergy, we sat through night after night after night of, of them making presentations and we had opportunity to ask questions and, and, you know, we had a lawyer representing the town. And, you know, like, gee, did we ever think to call Mike McElroy and say, what do you know about PFAS? And, and can you help us out here? I mean, spend a little money to get some information that we really could use and, and would, you know, I don't think we'd be in this spot if, if we had taken as a town some time to really research that and, and take a look at it. Um, let me see. You know, I think, you know, everybody sort of jumped on the bandwagon of this, these carpets that are laden with the toxic chemicals. And it's not unlike what we did with asbestos, right? When, when, when my parents were building their house, you know, asbestos was like wonderful, right? You could use it for your furnaces, you could wrap things, pipes with it, water pipes. You could, cause it just was a wonderful thing. You couldn't get rid of it. You couldn't destroy it. And we still can't destroy it. And we know now how many people it killed, who, because we didn't know and maybe because we didn't ask, but we certainly didn't, we didn't have the knowledge and didn't have, I think, the expertise to really look at those, uh, kind of things that were going on then. Once we learned, you know, we, we took action. Um, so I don't think, I don't know if you all got an opportunity to look at the copy of the contract with this company. I'm gonna ask for one tomorrow. I'm gonna do a public, uh, public records request and ask for a copy of the contract tomorrow because there should be things in there that we need to know. And, you know, like, what happens, what happens? Is there, is there a warranty, right? And how much of a warranty and what does it cover? And if, you know, if, if some kid gets sick, who's gonna pay for that? Is it gonna be the town that's on, on the hook for that? Because now, now we're talking about it and now we know? Or, and, and we, and we still go forward? I don't know. Uh, you know, I think those are the questions we need to be able to ask. But, you know, I think that, I, I, I've looked a little bit at, you know, they do a comparative analysis of, you know, what a grass field needs and what a artificial turf field needs. And, you know, it's like, you, you, you know, you need these rubber pellets that need to be replaced depending on how quickly they, they roll away. But you need to replace those. And, you know, there's, like, we can't just go around vacuuming them up. Once they're out there and they're rolling around in the grass or, you know, down the hill into the, into the river, they're gonna stay there, you know? And, uh, you know, we need specific equipment to groom it. We need, um, disinfectants, which I, I read about today. You need to disinfect that carpet because if somebody bleeds on it and they've got hepatitis B or HIV, it, it'll be there in that carpet for a period of time. I mean, certainly the sun will take care of that. But if there's an immediate spill, you know, it'll, it'll, it will maintain and keep alive other sorts of, um, biological prop, you know, bacteria. And, I don't know, how often do you disinfect it? Who's gonna do that? Is, is our, are our town employees gonna do that? Or do we have to hire another company that has the expertise to do that? Um, you know, somebody mentioned about the disposal, where, where are you gonna put that? I mean, I was just thinking that the size, the enormity of that thing. You know, it's not like if you change a carpet in your house, right? You go in and cut it and roll it up and it's gone. You know, this is a football field and then some, you know? How do we get rid of it? Where do we get rid of it? And who's gonna pick it up? Do we have to pay for that too? So, I mean, I, I think, you know, the, the, the people, the representatives from the company, we're at the last town council meeting and people were specifically talking about PFAS. And at one point, someone said, you know, this, the company we're using doesn't have PFAS in their, in their artificial turf. But if that was the case, why didn't that company just pull out a piece of paper and slap it right down and say to Roberta, you're wrong, you're wrong. There is no PFAS in that. And prove it, put it out there. And they've had two weeks and they haven't done it. So I'm thinking, I'm thinking maybe we're right. I'm thinking there is some PFAS in that stuff. And they can say whatever they want, um, and no one's gonna believe them. So thank you very much for listening to me and thank you to our own Erin Brockovich.
Yeah.
And, um...
I guess we'll see you again. Thank you.
Yes, you will.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to write the letter, to have the letter written?
I'll make a motion to write a letter to the town council regarding our change of concern on the material being used in the artificial turf.
I second it. That's Terry that seconded it?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, is there any discussion?
Yes, please. Um, can we contribute our concerns individually to you, the chair, as what we would like to see included in that question and answer kind of?
Do you wanna talk about it now?
Well, I was thinking maybe we should, maybe at least mention a couple of things that I think are important for them to respond to. I think the two thousand and twenty-nine is a, is a, is a very important piece in terms of liability, disposal, um, just in terms of the financial aspect of it. Regardless of your concerns about health issues, um, clearly agencies are concerned about it because these bans are going into, into effect. And, and so, you know, I'd like to see the contract. I certainly think that's something that I should have looked at and hadn't looked at. And, um, just to be aware of what the implications about getting out of this, if that is indeed where we think we wanna go. But I don't, I don't know yet because I haven't, your information's, I'm, I'm taking it in, you know? So, um, so I, I think those are a couple of things that we wanna, and, um, is, is this company truly PFA-free? It doesn't seem like it is, and they claim if that's the case, but, um... So those are a couple of things I, but I, if I could, look at the packet and then formulate more of a, um, informed response to what I would be interested in seeing, you know, so...
It would be more than two, no, I bet you if you checked out the minutes from last town council meeting, all the person reporting is right in those minutes.
Yeah, plus the video's available online.
Did you see...
Yeah, right, yeah, okay. Okay, so we'd have an adequate period of time to...
I do have the same kind of questions as you do. And the other one is, um, PUD sent the letter to town council and what did they include?
Yep.
In their letter? Um, and are they thinking of suing the, the company or the town? We don't know. Does anyone else have any more comments? I'm sorry, Sylvia, what did you say?
Uh, PUD, the Pasco Utility District, they wrote a letter.
They wrote a letter?
About contaminating water. And would they, I mean, where would that go after this letter is, you know, written? What are they going to do next? Are they gonna complain about the, the water being contaminated? Or are they going to be suing because the water is contaminated? No, we don't know.
I mean, what other options do we have besides writing a letter? Nothing really, cause it's out of our hands at this point, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And also just an idea about what the, um, the s, the shift to a grass field would look like in terms of implementation and financial burden as well.
So just my, my recommendation would be, um, if Sylvia, if you're gonna, as the chair, if you're gonna be responsible for drafting the letter, then each, uh, school committee member individually would send comments to, to Sylvia.
Mm-hmm.
And she could put something together, just be mindful of, of not violating OMA. So all communication would have to be directly with the chair and not with anyone else.
And I certainly will send it to every member just to, uh, review it before we do anything else or to put comments in it, add things to it.
But that's not gonna be before, that's not gonna be like for the meeting tomorrow, like obviously?
No.
Okay.
And they wouldn't be able to address it on their agenda anyway, right? Their agenda's already set.
It's, it's under forty-eight hours, right?
Oh.
So did I, I think I did say everyone in favor, but, um, is anyone opposed to this letter? Girl set? So it carries.
I would hope that our town council takes the letter from us seriously because it, it is our, our children that we're trying to protect, most importantly, and, um, along with the water.
Two weeks, right? Every two weeks they make.
No, they skip them.
They're... Oh, I see. It's still continuing.
Does our letter have to go through the agenda?
No, you could send the letter whenever you'd like. It would only be public as part of the agenda for, before the next meeting.
Right.
They would publicly recognize it as correspondence of the next meeting, but you can send the letter.
Right.
Courtesy of the town council. I, I would assume it would go to the town manager, the town clerk and the town council president.
And I think they would need direction from the town council to make any adjustments in the ongoing operation. So I think the next meeting's the soonest that they could take any action as a committee, you know?
The next meeting or tomorrow's meeting or next month's?
No, I said, meetings are, the agenda's already set for tomorrow.
What's the timeline of this, of this field?
ASAP. The timeline is there, giving us poison, they need to get rid of it as soon as possible.
But I mean, as far as, um, yeah, when will, when do we expect it to be completed?
The, the field, the completion date for the, for the field, I think the turf is scheduled to go in in the fall. Yeah, sometime during the fall, but the final completion of the field wouldn't, wouldn't be until the, the spring at the earliest.
I mean, it's unfortunate that this is how we're, you know, dealing with this cause I, I want a nice field, you know, I do.
The time, the timeline, right?
The plastic will be down in two to three weeks?
Turf is scheduled to go down in about three weeks.
So the plastic... So the plastic in two to three weeks? So I guess we have to have the letter. Quick, quick, quick. Would we get the trust involved?
Well, I'd like to know that I wanna have objection to the field. I still, I'm not there yet, so I wanna, I wanna see what it is that we're all talking about. I, I'm not gonna say that I should stop this based on this meeting, you know? So I'd like to see what everyone else has seen and then I know the time is, is of the essence. So, um, if need be, we can call a special meeting and, and reexamine this if, if necessary maybe, I mean... Well, I think we can send our message to the council at any time, but I don't know if Mike Wood could take a managerial influence on it. I don't, I just don't know. I mean...
Well, if you could, without the...
Without the council's direction.
Without the council's direction, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So what would people like? First of all, we have to get the information.
I don't think we're asking too much to ask them to put a pause on the field until, you know, this is all resolved, but I don't think that's asking too much. I'm sorry, I don't think it is. I mean, I have a grandson that's gonna be playing on this field. And I don't want my grandson poisoned by it. Listen, I've lived through poisoned water in Barville. When I had family members in one house, three of them got cancer when the water got contaminated in Barville. And I'm not living through that again. And I will not be sitting here knowing what I know now and possibly subject others to what my family has been through. I won't do it.
And it is, in view of information that it was just deep and hazardous material, that was not the case last week. And that is proving to be in that. So that's like, that's what I'm saying, who's all there for somebody to just say, hey, just a week ago, this stuff was flagged, you know? Like, you have to at least slow down, slow down, you know, so...
Mike, you've got a copy of the packet, right?
I do, I'll send it tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll get it from him. Don't, you can, you can hang on.
I have everything and I'll have it scanned in tomorrow, sent to all the members.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give it to Christina right now.
So we'll have it before the, we'd be able to read, at least most of it by for the meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah, she said that. So, this is kind of bold, but like, I'm gonna say it anyway. Um, like what if we just go to the meeting tomorrow and speak during public comment? And show like a united front about it?
That would be very powerful.
Well, I just, if we're talking about two weeks and obviously, you know, we're not gonna be able to draft a letter and get it on an agenda. So in my opinion, that's really like the only, the next thing, next possible thing to do.
Could we possibly rescind what we turned over to the town? Because of what we know now? Yeah, sure.
Yes. Could reach out to our attorney, uh, tonight?
Or like, could our attorney go to the meeting tomorrow, maybe?
I'm not sure if he'll be available, it's kinda short notice.
Little.
Would we have Ben or the trust?
It'd be Ben.
Ben?
Did it make the agenda?
Ben's gonna seal.
No, so it didn't make the agenda? So you just have to go as a, as a public comment?
That, yeah.
If you did have to go to the...
Yeah, sorry.
It said it wasn't...
Yeah, two minutes.
No, no, you might find it's a little difficult to get on the agenda for that item. So I feel as if you did show up to talk about that.
It's not enough time. It'll have to be forty-eight hours before the meeting starts.
Right, it was someone might have asked if it would be on the agenda, actually, twice a week or holiday. I, I was denied permission to, even though I said this is extremely sensitive. I wasn't bothered. I wasn't bothered with the council. So that cost two weeks, which I knew this, this, you know, this...
Will you be there tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Something smells wrong.
Your what? Oh. Yep.
So it sounds like we could at least draft the letter sooner than later. It does not have to be on the agenda. So we as a school committee could, at the very least, send a letter of disapproval for the materials that are, that they're using. And to see if they really have it to, you know, explore different options, uh...
But the meeting is after it's supposed to be delivered.
Right, that would be a next step. So you either do the letter or you just go right, right to the, hey, could we get some support from...
Are you going?
Yes.
Yeah, I think two members, I think of the council, can call us a special meeting.
Two members?
I think we need two members, yeah.
Two members are on the water board.
One of the town council sits on the House of Water Department, uh, water board, doesn't it?
Two. Okay, do we want to, um, shall I ask this group? If we want to have this, the two letter, we can get some information now to put into the letter? And I can type it up tonight. Yes, yes?
If I could respond tomorrow to help you draft that?
Okay.
So that would be available for the evening? Could we expedite it in that, in that way?
Yep. Anyone else would rather do that?
What was it, Sylvia?
Um, wait till tomorrow, like get, um, information. Um, wait till tomorrow, like, get, um, information by tomorrow and then put the letter together?
I'd like to see the packet, you know, just so I have a, a solid background from what's concerned.
Cause we're gonna get our, we'll be getting our information tonight? Or tomorrow?
I can send it to them.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Tonight's, I, I gotta go to work anyways.
So this is the packet that Roberta presented, that's what we're gonna get, okay?
I'll email it to you tonight.
It did say that we were going to write the letter, but didn't say when, right? When we agreed to write the letter.
And just to be clear here, Sylvia, you, you're gonna be...
Just agreed to write the letter, it didn't say...
Excuse me. Just to be clear, Sylvia, uh, Madam Chair, um, you're gonna be sharing the draft of what we've been sending?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
And it, the problem is, when do you want me to share the draft? I can start some stuff tonight, but the meeting is tomorrow at six, seven, seven?
Individually, like, Donison's requesting, is we, we can chime back individually to you for additions.
Okay.
And I think that's what Donison, that's what we're asking, right?
I think we're gonna have, we're gonna all consistently have maybe two or three, four items that are all gonna be on our concern, and then you can consolidate that to your, as a chair, you know?
I have all day tomorrow, so I can write it up. So, will that be okay for everyone else? Because I know you have work schedules and stuff. Okay.
What is the question? I'm, I have worked till three-thirty, what is the question?
But, I will send it to you during the day, and then, you know, you can give feedback, could that be okay?
Yeah.
During the day?
Yeah, I just can't promise I can get back to you till after I get out.
And as long as we have it after three-thirty, it's fine, because the meeting is at seven?
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay with everyone?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. So should I make a motion for that?
I don't think you need a motion for that.
No? All right.
The, the, the letter was already approved.
Very good.
I apologize in advance, I, I won't be able to help with that, I'll be out of, out of town the next week.
Would you like me to send it to you anyway?
You can, but I probably won't respond.
That's quite all right.
I'm on a plane.
Oh, I think I can send it to you on the plane, too, okay. Everyone all set now? Okay, and the next thing is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute, we have something in between?
Do, do you wanna just touch base on these two?
Pending issues, artificial field update, we just did that.
Just to say that we're good? Okay, I wanted to make sure we didn't have to actually say we're good.
Okay. As far as number fourteen, pending issues, the artificial update, we've already spoken about that.
Oh, we're still, we're doing adjourn?
The next thing is adjournment.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?